Twenty-one Planning Board meeting, it is shortly after seven P M and we are starting. Before I take attendance, I'll read the Governor's order pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting of the Dudley Planning Board will be conducted in total or in part via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at wma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Via Facebook Live and/or posted link at wma.gov. Following the meeting, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. All right, start to call the meeting to order, we'll do a roll call real first, real fast. First of all, Mr. Guy Horn, member?
Yeah.
All right. Does Bill DePage, member, does he join us yet?
No.
No, all right. Steve Wetruba, clerk of the board?
Here.
Present, and Richard Clark, vice chairman?
Here.
Myself, Daniel Edmiston, I am present. Bill Scanlon, our town planner, is also present.
Yes.
And Michelle, our acting clerk, good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So we are now find ourselves in order. First order of business, approval of the minutes from February tenth. Did anybody have a chance to read them and what is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented for February tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Clark to accept the mo- the minutes from last meeting as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Horn. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Horn?
Hi.
Mr. Wetruba?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
And myself, I, passes unanimously, thank you. We don't have any A and R plans, so the third item on our list tonight is the request for the one-year extension for the Dudley Estates.
And with us tonight has been Ben Osgood, engineer representing Dudley Estates.
Yep.
And is here to talk about the request for the extension. Go ahead, Ben.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ben Osgood, Ranger Engineering Group. We're here requesting a an extension of time to complete the subdivision Dudley Estates. And essentially what happened, you know, we received approval in two thousand nineteen, early in the year. Shortly after that, one of the principals of Four Lots Dudley LLC lost his wife. And so they delayed starting the subdivision in two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty, we had the COVID fiasco. So they again delayed starting the subdivision. And to my knowledge, they plan on starting this summer as soon as, you know, the weather is appropriate. And obviously, under your regulations, the sub- the subdivision is supposed to be complete within two years. So they need an extension of time just to construct the subdivision and complete the subdivision. I believe the, your regulations allow one-year extensions, they they can't have multiple extensions. But each extension is limited to one year, so we've requested a one-year extension.
I thought I saw in the paper this is up for sale. Is that not true?
It was for a period of time, but I believe the developers are going to go ahead and construct the subdivision.
All right. Is the board of any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Osgood or perhaps Bill. When is the expiration of the two-year time period? What is that calendar date?
I can look that up, Richard, if you give me a second.
I didn't, I didn't hear that question, what was the question?
The question was, when is the expiration date with regards to the two-year period? What is the calendar date?
I believe it's around April fourth of this year.
So yeah, I have April nineteenth, April nineteen.
April nineteen.
No, excuse me, May nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
So if we granted a one-year extension, it would be one year from May nineteenth?
Correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
Ben, are there any changes to the plan at all? Are you planning on going with the approved plan?
Nope, we would construct the approved plan.
I did have one quick question.
Yep.
Um, Bill, that plan that you sent us as a PDF attachment?
Yes.
I noticed there were no signatures on any of those pages, do those, does that get? Once it's signed, doesn't it get scanned in after it's signed?
Yes, it should be, right, once it's signed, it gets recorded. Um, I don't know if I actually went to the registry and picked up the recorded plan. Also, Ben, you did record that plan, didn't you?
The plan has been recorded and I downloaded it from the registry, so I can, I'll transfer you a copy tomorrow.
Okay, that's good, I'll forward it to the board.
Yep.
All right, that's all I had.
Right, any other questions? What is the board's pleasure? You get a motion on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the one-year extension regarding the Dudley Estates subdivision.
I have a motion to extend the Dudley Estates subdivision for one year. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote once again. Mr. Horn?
Hi.
Mr. Wetruba?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
And myself, I, makes it unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Ben.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to jinx this by saying it looks like it's gonna be a nice eve- easy evening, we're rolling along here.
Oh, we'll take care of that.
Item number four, discussion of use of local planning assistance hours from this CMR PC. I know that, Bill, you had a passed out a more or less an attachment with a couple of ideas, there you go.
So, you know, it's really up to the board to decide how to use these hours, they're granted to the planning board by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um, every year you get twelve hours, if you don't use them by June thirty, if you lose them. Now, the board can also gain one hour for every time a member attends a CMR PC event. So we had up to five, you know, five additional hours based on member attendance, which includes both Richard and Lou Perrin while he was the delegate to CMR PC. You can also, you know, cross boundaries, so if you wanted to allocate seventeen hours this year and twelve hours next year to one task, you could do that. So we had talked a little bit about some of the ideas and I tried to just make little bullets here about what those ideas might be and we can talk about them if you want. So at the last meeting, we talked about some of the recommendations in the Wester Dudley Corridor Study that are gonna fall to the planning board as zoning bylaw amendments. So parking, dimensional standards for West Main Street and mixed-use development. Number two, the town is under an order from the D E P to adopt stormwater bylaws. You may recall, last year, we adopted a N I D D E illegal detection bylaw at town meeting in October. Uh, we have two more bylaws to go, an erosion and sedimentation bylaw and a post-construction stormwater management bylaw. I think CMR PC could help us there, there are, you know, good model bylaws out there, I think they could um, you know, work from those and meet with the board a couple of times and we could flesh that out without too much difficulty. Uh, we've talked about self-storage facilities, the town does not currently allow these. Um, I don't know, it depends how involved you wanted to get, if you wanted to regulate these, that might require, you know, some additional research, in which case CMR PC could help with that. If you really just wanted to add a line into the use table to allow the say-by-site plan review or by special permit, you know, that would be a fairly simple thing that we could do on our own. Uh, the accessory uses section seems to be fairly troublesome to the building commissioner. Uh, people are always proposing different things and he has a hard time deciding whether it's allowed by the bylaw or not, so this would be a an overhaul of that one section of the use table to help him out in terms of deciding what's permitted and what isn't. Um, we talked about mapping the marijuana overlay district that uh, Mr. and Mrs. Nori have proposed on Corbin Road. I think that would be a fairly simple one, I'd ask the J S coordinator there to prepare on the map amendment, might be an hour or two, wouldn't be a big lift for him. Uh, wireless communication services, this was an idea that the board mentioned. Um, you know, we're going to five G, different kinds of wireless technology. This task would allow us to get ahead of that curve and be ready when things start coming in. I'm not familiar with it too much yet, so I don't know what would be required, and I don't know how many towns have actually you know, drafted their own regulations on this, but it's something we could certainly look at. Uh, someone mentioned the issue of paper streets. Uh, where are they, how many, what's the legal status of those streets? Uh, for example, can people develop off of those or what do they have to do in order to develop off of those? So that's more of a research kind of task. Um, the complete streets policy, uh, we adopted this last spring. As you know, we've been working on the prioritization plan, but there are a number of activities in the complete streets policy, which I've attached to this, if you wanna talk about those, we can. And then we, when the review came up of the Chase Mill, we, we had a lot of different, we had a lot of conversations about trails and kayak launches and things of that sort, so maybe we could have CMR PC prepare sort of a town trail map or including, you know, water-based trails and uh, that would be a kind of a service to the community, plus maybe promote some tourism in the town and that kind of thing. So those are the ideas that I had, but I'm certainly open to whatever other suggestions you might come up with.
Yeah, as an avid hiker, I really like number nine a lot. I try to get out and use as many trails in Dudley and its surrounding areas as possible, but I don't know if that is actually the best use of our hours, it's gonna be got some other very worthwhile suggestions in there. Uh, who wants to get started?
Chairman, if I may, I have some issues with regards to number one. I've had a chance to revisit the corridor study and I think there are two things fundamental to that, one is the assumption that somehow Dudley needs to look more like Webster. Uh, and in my forty-some years of living in Dudley, I've never heard any residents say that, I don't know where that comes from. The other one seems to be the idea that somehow that Nichols College is gonna be an economic anchor, if you will, and that Nichols students are just chomping at the bit to find their way to Main Street and Webster. Uh, or the combination of Main Street, Webster, which would be extended into Dudley, heaven forbid. And I don't see that happening at all, I mean, I haven't gone down there and taken any census officially or unofficial, but I don't notice a lot of Webster, I mean, Nichols students on the Main Street in Webster, any of the times that I've been down there, I don't know where that thought comes from. Uh, I'm really taken aback with some of this and I refer, example, to bring zoning in Dudley more in line with Webster, I I thought that maybe someone might consider bringing Webster more in line with Dudley. I think you might find, more likely to find Webster residents who would say they prefer their town to look more like Dudley than the other way around. And I think Mr. Wetruba actually spoke very eloquently at that, to that point last meeting.
Are there any of those that you do like that are on there?
Oh, yeah, I I I think the idea of, for example, uh, this self-storage thing with the apartments coming in uh, the Stevens Mill, I suspect that again, some number of those people will be moving maybe from larger residences to smaller and they'll have something that they might wanna store or perhaps somebody in an apartment looking for the day when they might be able to afford a a full-size home, if you will, in Dudley or somewhere and looking to acquire some pieces of furniture or some bulk items that they like to bring with them. But I think there's, we're likely to see more demand for that uh, as time goes on, the other thing is in terms of parking police vehicles. Uh, if you look at West Main, the upper end of it, up near the courthouse, across the street, up to the Universal Tag, you've already got a very large parking area for saleable vehicles, and I assume maybe some lease vehicles as well filtered in there. And we've had the issue with regards to the other property on the other side of the road. Uh, for some reason, Dudley seems to be a prime area for that kind of business and I suspect that if two have done it, there's probably more in the wings waiting to.
How about the other members, what do you guys think as preferences?
Uh, I like Bill's recommendation on number three, the self-storage facility, I think that's just a matter of us adding a line to the usage table, uh, something along the lines of that it would be allowed uh, by special permit, you know, something along those lines, that's something we can hash out later, that's that that we could take care of ourselves. And then it just goes before the the town meeting, I don't think we need to squander these hours that are available to us for that. Number two, uh, it's not very sexy, but I think I heard Bill mention something about that that was gonna be mandatory, that we're basically gonna have to have that done. Uh, if, Bill, I think you said they're gonna, basically, the state's gonna expect us to do that. And I certainly don't know the first thing about it, so uh, if we could get help with that and actually, you know, Bill's our town planner, he's gonna be in the thick of it, so I I I think that if he thinks it would be beneficial to use some of this time on number two so that we can bring that up to, uh, you know, what the state's gonna require, then I, I'm all for that.
Yeah, Steve, I can speak to that again for a second. Uh, the EPA and the SDP have an administrative order for the town to come into compliance with the MS four program, which stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And there's a number of tasks that the town is required to implement uh, in order to get into compliance with the program, that requires a, you know, mapping tasks of stormwater outfalls. Um, doing dry weather sampling of of locations in town for stormwater um, quality and integral in that is the the stormwater bylaws. Uh, so we've been able to get extensions from EPA on these tasks. Uh, we were able to get one of those bylaws passed at the last town meeting, so that sort of bided some some good grace time, but we are concerned that if we don't take action on these kinds of activities that we, the town might not be favorably looked upon by EPA and D E P.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, that's a, that sounds like that probably is the one with the, has most likely has the gun to our head.
It's starting to sound like it, Guy, any preferences?
Yeah, I agree, that that sounds like a high priority item, so I would vote that we uh we use whatever hours required of our current hours to satisfy the E, the D E P and the EPA.
Is there another one that you might have as a secondary pick as being worthy to pursue?
The the secondary one I was gonna, I I was thinking about, and I don't know how big of a job this is, I know, Bill, maybe you can speak about it, when the family with the farm talked to us about doing something to change the zoning so that they could have a uh, a cannabis farm there. Um, I mean, I think the way to do it would be an overlay district because I think we're gonna see a lot more people coming to us and asking that they have, you know, the ability to grow cannabis on their farmland. Um, and I don't know if you, if anybody else saw it, but just last week, there was a cannabis farm on off a center road for sale for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, I don't know if that one was permitted properly or or not, it said, uh, buyers beware, basically, in the advertisement. So, um, yeah, I mean.
I believe that was a hemp farm, which is same same kind of plant, just difference in the concentration of, uh, okay, THC.
There was something, didn't they, they wanted to do something else there though, right, Bill? And then I think that the, uh, that the town wouldn't issue the permit for what they wanted to expand to or?
Right, they're they're in core right now on that issue, Steve.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's what I thought.
There is an issue there on that.
Yeah.
It has to do with the structure that that was built.
So, all right, I I I agree with everybody, it seems like number two is going to be a high priority for us. There are a number of ones that are worthy as as secondary choices. I was kind of gravitating to number three as well with with the self-storage. Not a big fan of those, would like to find a way to, you know, personally to regulate them and keep them into only select areas. And number five, um, just on the surface, it just kind of bothers me, so it'd be nice to have some professional input as to what we can and can't do as far as that's concerned. Also like number four, just trying to get our building commissioner a little bit of assistance and trying to wade through all the mire of official language so that his job was a little bit easier. How many hours do you think that attack the number two might entail, Bill, are we talking the whole twelve or are we talking a surplus of twelve?
We have seventeen, Mr. Chairman.
We have seventeen, um, probably to be safe, we'd probably wanna reserve all those hours for that task and then maybe with the next twelve, for the next fiscal year, we could, you know, pick another one of these tasks and and get some work on that early in the year to get ready for the fall town meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
It sounds like we have a consensus and it sounds like that we're gonna need the hours for the the one the one item.
And, excuse me, and also, I think, you know, if we added in the zoning map for, as Guy suggested, that would only be an hour or two, so maybe we could use those, you know, get those two tasks done this year.
Which number was that, zoning map?
Uh, yes, number five.
Number five. Okay. Yeah, unless there's any questions or further input, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Regarding number five, um, just so I understand that correctly, you can't just rezone that one farm, right? Don't you have to like do a section and it has to be like some abutting properties there, I mean, how does this not become?
You're not, you're not rezoning it, you're putting an overlay district on it, the underlying zoning never changes.
You're basically saying this one property?
Has a new use.
Has a new use.
Right.
Okay, it's kind of like.
A lot more flexibility with overlay districts than underlying districts.
But that is, doesn't that open?
Overlay districts for the mills, we included multiple mills in the town.
Yes.
So when we do the overlay district for the farm, should we include multiple farms and if so, how do you decide which ones?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that by putting an overlay district on this specific farm, we're opening a door for anybody else to come in and make the same requests and then granting an overlay for them as well, so it would be almost as an on the, as needed um, urgency.
You're just, you would just be adding to the, to the original overlay.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I I don't have any background in agriculture certainly, but it's my understanding that these people plant something and if it goes according to plan, it's hemp, if it doesn't, it's cannabis. And they don't know until they've reached the point where they're gonna harvest it. So it looks like you can grow hemp pretty much anywhere, permitted use unrestricted in the town of Dudley where that, where there's any farm apparently. Uh, I don't, this business of piecemealing overlay districts all over the place.
Uh, well, I wouldn't say you could grow it anywhere.
I think we're gonna be chasing our tails for a long time on this, because eventually, you know, if this is as profitable as some people seem to think, I think there's, there's a town, Hinsdale in Massachusetts, where they just recently authorized a ninety-one thousand square foot outdoor cannabis farm, I don't know exactly how they went about that, but how can you tell someone you can't plant hemp, I mean, you can't plant marijuana, but you can plant hemp and who knows, weather conditions or whatever, you've got cannabis, so now you can't have that, I mean, it just sounds contradictory to me.
All right, so that sounds like a plan. The the majority of the hours go to number uh, two and a couple hours set aside for number five.
If I made this, piggyback a little bit on what Richard's saying, I think that I'm hearing that Richard's saying that this is not as cut and dry as we might think, just because the differences between hemp and cannabis and how they are closely related and it seems like you really can't tell in advance what it's going to be, if I understand it correctly. I personally would like to how should I say this? I personally don't wanna have, you know, every single person in Dudley growing hemp slash cannabis and to have it just, it's not what I want, that that's kind of a community I wanna live in, so I wanna make sure that, um, personally, I would like to make sure that we have some kind of legal footing, that we're not just opening the door to everybody being able to say, I want this too.
Bill, is there a limit on the amount of facilities that could be growing marijuana in town, I know we have a limit on the amount of dispensaries we can open, right?
So, you know, all the, all the marijuana uses are only allowed in the mill overlay district and in the industrial one-thirty district. There is no limit on cultivation, so however many cultivation property or, you know, facilities you could put into the industrial one-thirty, you know, is, could be quite large.
Okay.
Uh, outdoor cultivation is not allowed in the majority of the town, which is, you know, zone residential. So anybody who wanted to do marijuana cultivation outdoors would have to come to a town meeting to get their property included in the overlay district. So it's ultimately under the control of town meeting, uh, how many of those outdoor cultivation sites would be allowed?
For what it's worth, Mr. Chairman, I did check with the Cannabis Control Commission and, uh, my understanding from them is a town cannot limit the number of cannabis growers in town. That is open-ended.
But is, I, Bill, um, I do believe that there is a a law or a rule in place that states how large of a cannabis-growing operation you can have, you're not, you're not allowed to have, if you've got a hundred acres, you can't plant all a hundred acres, you can only plant certain amounts.
That's correct, it's actually in, well, there are two limits, the town bylaw limits it to sixty thousand square feet. So that's, that's the real, and that's the
That's an acre and a half.
Regulations limited to a hundred thousand square feet. So that would be the upper cap, so the town could modify the bylaw to go up to that hundred thousand if it wanted to. But at the moment, the limitation is sixty thousand because of the town bylaw.
So basically, an acre and a half?
Correct.
Per farm?
Per, yes, per licensee, I think, is the way it's worded.
Okay.
And if a farm says that they wanna do this and they come and they say, we would like to be brought into this mill overlay district so that we can do this, they still have to go before the town and get it approved at town meeting?
Yeah, so, that's correct, in order to, um, yeah, so that would be the other option, is we could rezone this property to industrial one-thirty or a mill conversion, which, and we talked about that and decided that didn't make any sense.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just, I'm just speaking to Dan's uh, comment that, uh, you know, about like, I understand what what Dan's saying and my thinking is, well, that's actually another kind of stopgap, that if, if it's a farm in an area where enough of the neighbors don't want it there, they could just come and vote it down at town meeting.
Right, yes.
And I mean, you have to remember that an acre and a half growing cannabis is not a lot of plants, because these things grow huge and they need to be spaced out eight to ten feet apart. So, I mean, if the, if the town already has the limit of an acre and a half per farm or per, per permit, which is basically per farm, um, you know, it should be relatively controlled.
I, I recall, Mr. Chairman, didn't the, what they talking about, thousands of plants, as I recall, the numbers they were, they were using?
I, I'm not really a hundred percent sure about that.
Yeah, I don't know, Richard.
It was a number for the first year and then it was greatly increased the second year or so. And I believe it was in the thousands.
Well, they were growing hemp, which there's no limit on.
Attempting to grow hemp and what they ended up with was something else.
Yeah, but it still speaks to the original point that he's making, which is that you can't go by it, it's limited, it's limited to an acre and a half, uh, I'm sorry, sixty thousand square feet. End of story, it doesn't matter if they were growing a ton of hemp plants. As soon as they, that THC level goes above a certain amount, the state comes in and says, destroy it, that, that was what the whole point that they were making was that they're having such a hard time growing hemp, because the damn stuff just wants to do what it wants to do and turn into marijuana. So they're basically saying, give us the right to make a living growing marijuana here because evidently, they've got some kind of soil up there that just really likes to turn this stuff into marijuana.
Well, I think Dudley fertilizer up here, no doubt, having been a dairy farm at one point.
Good stuff.
So, Bill, to clear the confusion in my mind, if you could, please. My neighborhood's zoned rez eighty-seven. In theory, an acre and a half of marijuana or hemp or whatever could fit on most of my neighbor's yards. Or on the properties, but it's residential zone. Are they allowed to grow?
No.
No. So it has to be in the farming, farming zone?
It has to be in industrial one thirty with a milk conversion overlay district. Or if we adopt this marijuana overlay district, it would be allowed in there.
So, I mean, alright, so I'm understanding that, but. If we're applying the overlay district to those who requested. Could one of my neighbors request it and that could that get approved?
Yes.
And that's a slippery slope that I'm trying to avoid.
So we call that for marijuana, you need to get a special permit from the planning board. And you need to get a license on the Cannabis Control Commission. So there's lots of hurdles to jump through.
Unless it's hemp, and they don't have the hurdles to jump through, then I've got the same thing, just different.
Yes.
So that's a slippery slope that I'm going through.
Right.
In my mind is that, you know, where, where does it stop?
But all of those neighbors in that rez eighty-seven would come to that meeting and they would have their pitchforks in there.
I mean, yeah, and then if you, if, if the town has said yes to five people and now it says no to two people, what's to stop those two people from suing? Uh, you have to have something in place that's going to say yes or no, I think. I don't know how, how trebly we can make this. And maybe I'm overthinking this. Maybe this is really a simple issue.
Right. I mean, I think it has to be like, the other thing too, like if, if you're trying to put like sixty thousand square feet of, of. Uh, farming on an eighty-seven thousand square foot lot and still retain a home. I mean, the farming has to, the farming area, if it's, if it's to grow marijuana, has to be fenced in. So I mean, it's going to be very hard to do on an eighty-seven thousand square foot lot.
Well, yeah, they're not going to make the maximum of sixty thousand, but they could then in theory just make twenty thousand, ten thousand. I mean, sixty thousand is the maximum, right?
Okay, yep.
Yeah. So they can, they can put up five thousand in the backyard and call that that. It's kind of like a sip yourself of the chicken, right? Once you have one chicken someplace, then you got chickens all over the darn place.
Well, I think they can have, I, I don't know the rules exactly, but I think if you're in a residential area, you can grow two or three plants per adult in the house.
I think, yeah, there is some, some provisions for that.
Six per person up to twelve per household.
Okay. No, I think a seven or eight is okay.
Alright, so it's possible I overthought this. I, I think we have consensus, consensus on number two. It sounds like we've got a little bit of a mixed opinion on number five, but. Maybe. With the idea being that there's going to be a town meeting that's going to approve this. It sounds like it may be a good idea to move forward with it now. I mean, is the board's in. An agreement, we can accept a motion to get these hours allotted?
You looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we allocate the local planning assistance hours to. Number two, prepare stormwater bylaws as required by town MS four permit. And number five, the controversial number five, prepare the zoning map amendment for the proposed marijuana overlay district, whatever that will look like.
I'd say I have a motion to allot our hours to item number two, stormwater bylaws and number five for the zoning map amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor will go to famous roll call again. Guy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
And myself, also an I, we are unanimous.
And before we get off this topic, do you want me to prepare an amendment for the self-storage facilities for? This annual town meeting or do you want to hold off on that?
To prepare what for?
Uh, the self-storage zoning amendment. Where we mentioned about maybe just creating a new line in the use table to allow this in certain districts in town. Does the board want to take that one on for this town meeting?
What district will be allowing it in?
Well, that's to be discussed and determined. Just want to know if you want to, you know, work on it. For this annual.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, did you want to put something together and kind of get a draft form and have us talk about it next time? Or do you want to?
Yeah.
Talk hashed out tonight?
No, no, I'm not ready to, to talk about it tonight, but.
Well, we could, we could just look at. We could look at use tables for neighboring towns. I mean, there's got to be, Webster's got. Those self-storage facilities. So I'm sure they've got something. And I don't know about Charlton. I think there is one on Route twenty in Charlton.
Charlton, yeah, they've got a couple.
Yeah. So I think if we just looked at some of those other neighboring towns and see where they're allowing it and under what conditions they're allowing it. That would probably where we would start with our ideas of what we want to do.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would think we would probably want to look at industrial and light industrial areas to start off with, rather than having them in the residential areas.
Yeah, and keeping the, uh, keeping the special permit process as part of it, as, as, as opposed to by right. Having a special permit so that we can address those, those unique situations. Where you've got, you know, kind of like what we did this past, uh. With, with the leased parking lot where we were talking about, well, you know, it is, it is residential, but the way that that lot was laid out, we kind of agreed that. It wouldn't be such a bad thing there. And, you know, you had the support of the neighbors and the neighborhood came in that said, hey, as far as they're concerned, they don't have a problem with it. That was really, uh. Uh, helpful that we were able to go through that process.
No, agreed. Yeah. So Bill, if you don't mind, it'd be appreciated if you could kind of tackle that.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to number five. Further discussion on sidewalks, bicycle lanes and other complete streets measures. So last time meeting, we heard a, uh, interesting and, uh, fact-filled. Presentation. Which gave us a lot to think about and places to start. I mean. We're trying, kind of looking for some target areas about what our goals might be overall. And then, uh, so we can help get this process started and, uh. Anybody had time to kind of digest what was said and, and, and want to start this discussion?
I did walk. I did take a walk and ended up. Uh, going in my walk, I ended up going from Dudley Beach. Uh, to the Mason Road School parking lot through that path through the woods there. Of course, it was snow covered, but it actually isn't, it isn't in that bad of a condition. The other thing was, once I got out to Mason Road School. I took that path that runs from Mason Road Schools parking lot to the Dudley Fire Station and that is in fact paved. So, um, they were mistaken at that meeting. It is in fact paved. The paving is not in greatest shape, but it's still paved.
That's asphalt, right? Not concrete?
Yes, it is.
Uh, I did, Mr. Chairman, have some follow-up with Gemma. In regards to some of the things that were mentioned at last meeting, Mason Road specifically and the intersections that, uh, were brought up, uh, also the sidewalks in terms of. On Center Road and, uh. I frankly had urged her to actually go out and. Visit those spots, you know, the rubber meets the road kind of thing. Uh, she seemed more inclined to use some sort of a satellite mapping. Whatever protocol that she apparently has available to her. Uh, I don't know what that's going to look like. I, I, my sense of it is personally that. You really don't get a feel for those areas unless you've driven them or you're on them and, and looking at them live, if you will. So I'm not sure what she's going to come up with, but, uh, I'll remain hopeful for the time being.
Okay.
I do notice, I have noticed, uh, and it's kind of funny in a way. Uh, you see, uh, with the snow on the road as it's, it's certainly melting now, but I mean. We've had snow of late and, uh, some people will actually remove the snow from their driveways and their sidewalks and some aren't quite so conscientious. Uh, you see a number of dog walkers out there and dodging traffic. Uh, they're obviously limited in terms of what they can do with the snow on either side of them in many cases. So it's, uh, I think it's definitely a safety issue. And I was very happy to see them highlight that and, uh, obviously they're looking for bike paths as well. I'm not sure how we're going to accommodate those in town. But that certainly would be a good idea as well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, 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 um, obviously was at the last meeting and. Did some thinking about what, what I thought would be like. You know, something to put on a list, because I think if we don't have things on the list, if we don't make a list of, um. You know, something to prioritize or something to look at. Uh, you know, you're not going to be in line for funds from the, from the state or the federal government or wherever they're getting the funds from. The, um, the improvements that were made in front of Nichols College, uh, basically on Center Road, that was, that was all state money that funded that. And, you know, it ends right at the four corners. Where, uh. Mr. Clark was talking about starting there and going towards the high school. I think that's a great idea because I think that. You know, finishing the sidewalks down to the, at least to the schools would make it a lot more. Walkable for the students that have to go to that direction. Uh, also for the student, you know, if there are students that have to come from the high school to go to Nichols College or vice versa, then it's, it's, it's all there. And I do think there's going to be some issue with trying to put a sidewalk in when, when you've got a historical. Cemetery that has a stone wall that's so close to the road and the road's been lowered and the wall is not. So I think we're going to have to have some kind of creative. Retaining wall built or the stone wall moved or something like that to, to make that work. But, um, you know, that, that could be. If that can be funded through these funds, that would be a lot better than having the town try, try to do it on their own. Um, so that would be my, my first choice would be starting at that four corners and going to the high school. My second choice for a big project that I was thinking about would be starting at that four corners and going down to the parking shop. Could be, uh, shopping center. Cause I got, I gotta believe that there are some, at least some Nichols College kids that don't have a car. That walk down to the supermarket to get, buy food or, you know, buy something. And, you know, it wouldn't be a bad thing if there was at least one sidewalk, if not two sidewalks on Airport Road. Um, Airport Road's wide enough that it could accommodate it. And also I think it would help slow down the traffic a little bit if there was sidewalks on both sides.
I can attest to the fact that there are some Nichols students who do take that walk. And it's somewhat seasonal. You don't see them on the road a heck of a lot right now, but in this spring and the fall you will. And there is a sidewalk in front of the bank. I think, well, I'm not sure if it gets as far as the bank. But there is the beginning of a sidewalk down there, if you will. And, uh. A great idea would be just to continue the darn thing, uh, you know, until it matched up with where you are up at the four corners. The other thing, and I'm glad you brought it up in terms of a safety factor. That intersection where the golf club is, golf courses is identified as a dangerous intersection. And putting a sidewalk in there and giving pedestrians some option in terms of trying to get through that intersection. Is again, probably not a bad idea because those kids coming down Tanyard Road obviously. Have to get through the intersection somehow. And if there's a sidewalk there, it may give them a better option than what they're dealing with now, which is basically look, duck and run.
And then the, um, so that would be my first two things that I would, I would like to see considered. And then the third thing that I was, uh, thinking about is. There is a utility easement from Mason Road to. The middle school for, um, I believe it's water and sewer.
Oh, that way.
And it probably wouldn't be, I, I know kids probably walk on that now. It's probably, there's probably a path there now that kids walk on to go from. Um, you know, the middle school or the high school down to Mason Road. Like if you have, uh. I could see the opportunity where if you had a family with multiple children. And the older kids get out of school earlier than the younger kids. You know, maybe the parents tell the older kids, walk down to Mason Road and meet your brother or sister and we'll pick yous up there. You know, so maybe paving that trail over the utilities easement that we already have. And making that improve so that the kids could get from one school to the other school without walking all the way down Dudley Oxford Road and then down Mason Road.
Well, if I may, Mr. Horn, uh, Mr. Horn, uh, I, I believe that's another great idea, but I would say that you need sidewalks then extending down to the Mason Road Elementary School. And that again brings us back to, uh, perhaps sidewalks being an enhanced safety feature on Mason Road. Which is, uh, if you, if I correct it goes, it varies. It's thirty mile limit and I think in some sections it's a twenty-five mile limit. And I'm not too sure how sensitive the drivers are to that. And, uh, having a sidewalk option certainly would be safer for the kids all the way. You know, connecting all of the schools by way of something that is safe, be it bike path or sidewalks is probably. One of the best ideas that I think could come out of this.
I actually like all those ideas a lot and, um. I think that one of the things we have to think about is a level of, of difficulty. And I think that Mason Road is going to offer us the biggest challenges because there is a very. Limited amount of space we can do anything on. I mean. You drive down that road, you encounter somebody who's walking their dog and you really have to stop and look for oncoming traffic and try to dodge around them and the yards and they're, they're close. There's slope differences and grading differences. But I do think the other, um. Three ideas as far as from the four corners and then going to the utility easement sound like they're more feasible and more. Attainable at, at a sooner period in time possibly. Bill, are they looking for priorities from us, do you think, Bill? Are they just looking for a number of items to get started or what do you think our overall goal here is?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to paraphrase, I think, uh, senior selectman, uh, never ask, never get. That's part of his auctioning philosophy. Uh, I suspect that we, you know, put them all on the, on the table and. See what, uh, we can get, you know, seriously.
I've got no problem with that.
If they tell us that we've overspent whatever monies are available, then okay, then we can do some picking and choosing if we need to. But, uh, if we don't ask, we'll never know.
Well, to answer your question, Dan, you can put as many projects on the list as you want. But you have to identify fifteen as priorities.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, right.
I ain't staying here that long tonight.
And it's, it's a big spreadsheet.
So far, we've got maybe four, four live items right now.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you could break these up a little bit. You could say from four corners to the, to the golf, uh, the country club there and from the country.
Yeah.
Road and make it in this. So we could get out of these four, we might go to get twelve, for example. Are, are, is the team going to meet us? Jenna and her team going to meet us next week? Are they coming?
At the next meeting, correct.
So I, I mean, I think that these four right here are great beginnings. What does the board think about holding on to these four? And then bringing it up with them, what they think we should add on to that core area to reach our fifteen?
I think that's a good idea, good strategy.
A little input from them as far what they think is might be the best. Branching out possibilities?
And if we have room, then let's, what Mr. Retroba was saying, let's put, put on the, uh, the path down to the. Down to the public beach, because that, that's, that's easily one that could be done because it's town-owned property. The other thing we could do is. Right, that could be, that could be paved and we could also do lighting on that because she said that lighting could be included. There's no lighting on that. I mean, it's not like people should be down there at night anyways, but.
Sorry, Guy, I don't mean to interrupt you, but actually I think when I brought up the lighting, that's where she actually said that that was, uh.
Oh, yeah.
More difficult. I don't, I don't think they, I think that's where a problem.
Okay.
Getting that. Yeah, but I, if we have that trail there with, with, uh, the solar technology nowadays, granted it's back in the woods a little bit, but I think that. We could be able to work out some kind of an option that might be, um, feasible for the town. Who knows? Yeah. So I think we got five great ideas here to start and I think if we bring these up to them, uh, in our next meeting. They might help us with a couple branch out ideas and then we'll have our fifteen, you know, targets filled up at a pretty quick rate.
And I think Mason Road would be a major challenge. I agree because it's narrow in areas, but I think also even Center Road there is going to be a challenge. You know, when you get up to that intersection where the historic houses there, the, the old town meeting house, I mean, that's going to be a nightmare doing it there. So. And when you get to the end of Mason Road, um, you know, you, you take a left and you go right back to the high school and I. I think, isn't there a sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, there, right.
There is a sidewalk, right.
So, you know, if you can connect that.
You've got areas, you know, sections of sidewalk and then you've got nothing. Then you've got another section of sidewalk. And it's, it's disjointed, it's not connected. It's. It's probably a little more confusing and, uh, probably a little, uh, you know, for somebody who's handicapped, let's say.
You want to talk about ambitious projects, um. Bill, wasn't there some talk, uh, about them trying to figure out a way? To, uh, fix it so that. Vehicles going into the middle school would be able to go back out some way and not have to come back down. Because of that whole traffic bottleneck with the high school and the middle school basically sharing that driveway at that point. With the buses coming in and out. And I don't know whether or not anybody's actually started to, to think about. Uh, and actually trying to make that happen. But wasn't there something, I thought I remember you talking about, that there was some kind of pie in the sky idea about, boy, you know, if they could. They could fix that. And I was thinking about it and I was like. How hard would it be to get that, to get a road from there out to Mason Road? how hard would it be to get that, to get a road from there out to Mason Road? Because I mean, Mason Road is really close to the actual property that the middle school was on. When you get down, further down Mason Road, there's a street, I can't think of the name of it. It's, it's a, a left-hand turn off of Mason Road, right before you get down to the end. There's only like three or four houses on that street, and it's a dead end. And when you get to that dead end, you can literally see through the trees, you can see the school.
I know, I think I know where you are. You're up, uh, okay. I thought you were down further. But you're actually probably approaching the end of Mason Road. Is that where you're, you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, uh, right before you get to that bad turn right down near the end of Mason Road.
Right.
On the left-hand side, there's a little street right there.
Yeah.
And there's only like three or four houses on that whole street. I don't even know, I don't even think it's a town road, is it?
No, it's not.
Yeah, let's say it was a private way, they're kind of buried back in the woods there a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, when you get to the end of that, and there's a path going through there, because kids use that all the time.
All right. So Bill, I think we have our beginnings of a strategy?
Good.
Yep.
All right. And we can move on to standard business? Discussion status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision roads.
The only item I have to report on this is in regard to Pierpont Estates. I had a conversation with the developer's attorney this week. I've been looking for some of the legal documents that we need to, uh, have in order to proceed with the, uh, acceptance of several of the streets in that development as, uh, town roads. So he's gonna get back to me with the things I've asked for, so hopefully we'll have everything in order for that. Um, Tobin Farms, I believe is complete, and that's, um, been, uh, I think referred to Town Council for review of the legal documents that I have for that. Uh, so that's, those are the only updates I have on, uh, existing subdivisions in town.
Another thing on Eisenhower again, Bill?
No, I haven't had any discussions on that one.
Inspections and actions associated with site plans.
Um, Bill, what are you, what are you waiting for on Eisenhower?
Um, I, I think the developer has to, you know, decide that he wants to get the streets accepted and he just hasn't come forward. Um, as I understand it, the development is basically done. Uh, but it's been sitting there now for a couple of years and of course, things are starting to, to deteriorate. So the longer he waits, the more difficult it might be for him to have to bring the road up to, you know, standards that we'd be looking for. But he just doesn't seem to be interested in doing it. We did have the issue with the, uh, sewer pump station. Uh, the town had to go in and replace, uh, at, at least one of the pumps, and I think they were gonna look at the second one as well, and we'd be, um, probably backcharging the developer some of that cost. Um, but I, I don't see why he couldn't come forward once the pump station is taken care of. You know, to get it accepted, then he could just, you know, walk away from it and, uh, give it to the town.
We're still holding funds on that subdivision?
Last night I saw we had about six thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, well, that developer is Mr. Heaney and he's a, uh, neighbor of my parents.
Ah, maybe you could, uh, pay a friendly visit, because Bill has had, uh, Bill has understated it tremendously. He's had a long and not very fruitful history in terms of contacting or trying to contact or communicate with Mr. Heaney, who seems to be as elusive as he can, well, it seems to have made a, almost a profession of being elusive. Uh, as I understand it, Bill, there have been any number of mailings, uh, registered mail, uh, phone calls, emails, any number of, uh, opportunity or opportunities for him to engage. And for the most part, uh, he really hasn't been playing, uh, playing fair, I don't think.
Okay. I could, I could try to reach out to him. I've talked to him before in the past and he's always taking my calls when I've called him.
You think that was an unfair characterization on my part, yeah?
No, I think that's fair.
Okay. All right, so if, if the board's all right with that, um, you want me to make a phone call and try to talk to him or see if he'll come in or?
I think definitely try to get his attentions.
Okay.
Yeah, find out what his intentions are and see if we can help him getting that, uh, road accepted. That'd be great.
Okay.
All right, so we want to move on to the plan, uh, to the inspections, Bill? Was there anything there?
No, nothing there.
Okay. That takes us to Planner's Plate.
Uh, two things. I had sent out a draft of the, um, planning board report for the annual report. Uh, Richard had a comment on it. He asked me to add in, uh, the cell tower at the Congregational Church, which ended up being an eligible facilities request, for which the board really didn't have any authority to review. But I added that in because it's something that you did work on and it was sort of the outcome of that whole, uh, question. Um, so that's the only change I've made since the draft I sent to you. If you have any other comments, I'd be happy to incorporate those into that draft.
Kind of circling back to the things that I was talking about offline, we've had this nasty struggle with this thing called COVID and, and Zoom. And, uh, you think it might be possible to just kind of put a little blurb in there about how brave and, and industrious we've been in dealing with all this crap? Excuse me, French?
I could go on for paragraphs on that topic, so I will, I will add that in.
No pictures, please.
Not to mention a new email system.
So are no other comments on that one? I have one other issue.
Yeah, the only comment, sorry for interrupting real quick, but I just think first of all, it was good job. I mean, I, I liked everything. It was, it was good to see that we've been productive and I liked the way you put everything together, so big thank you for that.
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, Legacy Estates, uh, you may recall, uh, they came to the board at a meeting or two ago uh, for, uh, removal of the condition that the road, that they have to file definitive plan. So that project is for sale, and one of the potential buyers has approached me about possibly making some minor changes to the site plan. And I wanted to call it to your attention tonight to see how you wanted to handle it, whether you think it would be sort of a minor modification, which we could just handle, you know, in due course without a public hearing. But whether you would consider it a major modification, which would require, you know, a formal filing, public hearing and, and, uh, you know, more of a decision, a formal decision on that. So.
This is behind, um, the church and Airport Road in that area, right?
Right. It's a twenty-two unit, uh, senior housing, over fifty-five housing project. It was approved as, uh, du, as duplexes. The new owner or now, or at least potential buyer wants to, uh, make them all single-family detached. So that's the major change. He's got a great deal of experience with this kind of development and he feels that duplexes don't sell as well as single-family. So the number of units would stay the same, uh, the buildings would become single-family detached. They'd actually have a smaller footprint than, uh, the proposed duplexes. So the amount of improved coverage would be reduced a bit. The buildings would have more of a, uh, the front yard depth would be increased, so there'd be a little more lawn space between the road and the buildings. The, um, uh, there would be sing, single-story rather than two-story buildings. And so it's really, the, the road would be the same. The open space, sort of the building, you know, develop, development area of the building envelope would stay the same. Now the number of units stays the same. Open space, no, no, uh, modifications of wetland boundaries or anything of that sort. Drainage is the same, um, same number of bedrooms, still all, uh, two-bedroom units.
It stays over fifty-five still?
Still stay over fifty-five.
Okay.
So, uh, I wanted to bring it to, you know, to you for discussion as to how you wanted to handle it. Um, they're not really changing the road layout, which would be the primary concern. Um, drainage and stormwater calc, I think would be about the same.
Yep.
So I don't know what, what's your, uh, preference on that?
You're talking about, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Very good.
Bill, you're talking about twenty-two single-family units?
Yes.
And they're gonna fit that in where they were previously getting twenty-two units by using eleven duplexes.
Right.
That were two-story.
Yes.
And now they're gonna go to one story. But that, that, I, I'm gonna see how that works.
He kind of gave me a plan, unfortunately. Uh, it's not gonna show up very well here, um, you know, on Zoom, but he, um, maybe I can just show you one section of it. Um, it's a little difficult to see, but you can see the green is, uh, is an outline of the single-family units and below that are the two-family units. Excuse me, are the, are the duplex units? So, and, so the previous or the, I guess the current configuration has the buildings going out here. So he's actually shrinking the, the footprint of, of the two-family units to the one-family, so. Um, he's, you know, you have to see it, obviously,
To believe it.
termination, but that's kind of what I've got at the moment.
So they're, they're definitely gonna be close together, but that whole project.
Twenty feet apart.
Right, that whole project was put under, on open space residential subdivision. So it doesn't have to follow the typical setbacks and all that, that you would have in typical residential construction.
Mm-hmm.
Whether that fell under open space residential what?
It was developed under the open space residential subdivision.
Okay.
By law, and, and once you go into that, you can, basically what the, what, what the purpose of that by law is, is to try to develop, uh, a subdivision on the least, on the smallest footprint possible and then have the remaining land as open space. And that's basically what he's doing here. He's trying to condense all the units in one area and leave the rest of the property as open space.
What, what is the usage of the open space in that project?
I believe that the open, the open space in that project was gonna be open to the town.
There was gonna be a trail, as I.
Right, all around the project.
Which, uh, would give you a great view of my backyard.
Right.
I, I understand, I, I have to recuse myself on this issue, but, uh, some part of that open space is, I understood it, and again, uh, I may be speaking out of turn, uh, was just to be left as in its natural state. I don't think there was any, because of, uh, wetlands, I think there was, uh, limited opportunity to do anything with that, uh, either for recreational purposes or any other purpose at this point.
Right, so Bill, do you get a sense that the open space is gonna remain untouched by this change?
I do, Steve. Yeah, I don't think he's proposing to change that at all.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, I'm feeling a little bit silly for being this, being mostly over my head, but in the open space residential subdivision, this allows the developer to do things that he wouldn't be able to do in a normal subdivision.
Correct, or he can build units closer together in order to.
Which makes sense in, in, in the, in the aspect of duplexes. That's usually a type of construction, type of subdivision where things do get a little bit closer, but changing that now from a duplex to a standalone one-family. It must be like you're trying to get into a gray area here, so.
But I kind of remember, I remember this discussion when they were reviewing the master plan and they were talking about, um, because quite a few years ago that came up and the whole idea was, I think they called it cluster housing, if I recall correctly.
Sure.
And, and the whole idea was instead of having all of these houses that were on large lots separating from each other, you take that same number of houses and you allow them to be built a lot closer together. And you have the sidewalks and the idea was to, to foster community where you, you get to know your neighbor better and you, you know, you can walk your neighborhood and, and, and you're not walking, you're not walking five hundred feet between how, between driveways. You're, you're actually right on top of each other. The trade-off being that if you're gonna allow a developer to do that, the developer has to set aside part of that parcel that he was developing that would have been taken up by all those spaces in between houses and now, uh, set that aside for some sort of good use. Like in some towns, um, I'm sure you've seen this, where you go into a neighborhood and all of a sudden in the neighborhood, there's a nice playground, there's a park, there's for the, all the kids in that neighborhood to go with swing sets and everything. And that would be like an example of one of the things they could do, uh, using this, this type of, uh, project. So that's why I was wondering what, what it was. So like the walking trail and that, uh, is a perfect use. So it, 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 it's not so much a, a thing of, that it's just for duplex, that you can do this kind of thing with single-family. I've even seen some where they actually get really creative and they have the driveways, uh, are on the back sides of all the houses.
Mm-hmm.
And so you have like a common, uh, area in the front, a green area, almost like a park, that all of the fronts of the houses would face that. And all of your driveways are serviced by, uh, a road on the backside of the houses, kind of an unconventional way to do it, but
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of creative thinking going on and how they, how they're making some of these subdivisions. But the idea is to get away from, you know, where you're in that, like what you were talking about at the end, Res eighty-seven. I mean, some people like that. Some people like having a huge lot and you're not right on top of your neighbor. But then there were other people that liked the more rural feel, like, uh, not rural, uh, urban feel, I guess.
Yep.
Neighborhood candid design.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so if you look at the, the map that, um, Bill just put up, so those footprints on each unit of those duplexes. So the footprint of one duplex right there is, uh, over five thousand square feet is what they were proposing. So if you, if you did like a twelve hundred square foot, uh, si- single-family house with a one-car garage or instead of a two-car garage, you could, you could definitely fit it in there.
He seems to have done it, you know, I don't know what, I haven't, you know, obviously verified it, but he showed it on the plan. This is the plan that Randy Waterman presented to you, uh, a couple meetings ago.
So Bill, just to kind of try to bring this to a close here, we have two options. The one is to, what, what are the two options we have?
Well, you could treat it as a minor modification, uh, which would be something he would, you know, submit to you of his, his, uh, changes and you would look at it and, and, you know, probably, you know, he'd be asking for you to approve it.
Yep.
Or you could c- consider it a, a major modification, in which case you would sort of treat it as, as a new kind of plan that you would want to review in depth, probably send it out to Jeff for peer review, have a public hearing, um, and then decide whether you would modify your original approval.
So the major modification puts the added burden on the developer that would have to go through a, a town meeting. Those, you mean, a public meeting to hear everything before we, so is that in time for him?
Well, it is, of course. I mean, he's, you know, looking to buy the property and that would be a risk, I think, that, you know, you'd have to decide whether he thought he could get through that process, um, with the go-ahead at the end and how long that would take and whether you'd wanna hang in there that long.
All right. Guy, what's your feeling on this guy? Minor or major?
My opinion is I would say it would be a minor modification, because I think what he's proposing would be allowed under the open space residential subdivision. And if it was proposed that way the first time, we would have approved it that way. It wasn't, but, you know, I think that's an option that, you know, whoever purchases the land would have as an option if they see, um, you know, it's obviously more expensive to build the single-family homes than it is to build the duplexes. But if, if that's his priority or his preference, because he thinks it's gonna have a better selling feature, and I, I think he's right. Um, the only thing that I would, the only thing that I would stipulate is that, uh, once he did make his proposal with the single-family homes and that the spacing is, that he has that spacing approved by the, um, fire department, that they have enough room to get in and service all those houses if there was a fire. And that he may, because the houses are only gonna be twenty feet apart, he may be required to put fireproof, uh, material in between the houses. So
Good points, yep.
In some subdivisions, they, I know before they put the siding on the house, instead of using plywood, they'll put, they'll put a fireproof cement board or a fireproof, um, gypsum board, and then they put the siding on top of that. So if there is a fire in one house.
gypsum board, and then they put the siding on top of that. So if there is a fire in one house, you know, it doesn't automatically spread to the next house.
Excellent points. Steve, what do you think? In agreement?
Yeah, I think, I think I'd be okay with the minor, but I, I think, Bill, you want to make sure that at, at least the way I feel is, can't change those roads at all and he can't mess with that open space at all. If, you know, if he comes back, if we say, yeah, okay, we're going to let you go with a minor and then he comes before the board and he's changed road layout or he's messed with any of that open space, I'm going to definitely vote it down. And I would, I would like to think the board would agree with me that at that point, he's made a major change.
Okay.
Richard?
As I understand it, Mr. Chairman, I am in a butter, I believe the principal of butter in this situation. So I have been
You're going to be.
Understanding that I should recuse myself on this.
All right. I, I'm in agreement with what both Guy and Steve are saying. It's something that could be a minor as long as we keep the roads and the, and the open spaces are left alone as, as approved. And we do need to talk to town departments, especially the fire department to find out if there's any other restrictions that might be put on it due to the fact that they are now single-family.
Well, we could put that on him, right, Dan?
Right, exactly.
That's, 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 that's his responsibility to find that out.
So do we need a vote for this, Bill, or is this, this, this just a discussion?
Yeah, there's nothing formal before you right now, Dan. So, you know, I've got the sense of the board. I'll let him know that he can submit as a minor modification.
Okay. Anything else on the Planner's Plate?
Nope.
Nope. Comments from the Planning Board?
Yes, we're keeping Michelle up.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the next CMRPC meeting is on the 11th of March. The topic is the best practices for diversity, equity and inclusion in planning. It goes on to say that meeting regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, systems of historical oppression and solution-based planning practices. That might be a little more wolf than I'm ready for, frankly.
You looking for someone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, CMRPC seems to have morphed into something of a political advocacy group. I had thought it more based on the kinds of nuts and bolts sort of issues that we deal with, such as the kinds of things that have been part of the discussion this evening. They are, well, let's leave it at that. A political advocacy group and I think if we wanted to look at it on a continuum going right to left, they're probably somewhere on a 10-point scale at about 13 and a half.
Does that mean we need to find a different representative or just for this meeting or?
Well, I will partake of this meeting and see if we can't get another hour in that. I will try to restrain my comments so that they don't reflect badly on those of us in Dudley. They probably think of Neanderthals and they're not wanting to be like Webster, but I don't know that I am inclined to continue with this too much longer. I think the next time we get to another point of reorganization, we might consider alternatives, unless there's something that changes that I don't see it coming down the road.
Okay, duly noted. Anything else on the Planning Board?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Mr. LePage reached out to me and wanted me to know that he did not receive the emails because we were talking about that he's not on the new system because he wasn't able to be at that meeting because he was on vacation. So I just think maybe for the time being, if you guys could just send emails, notifications of the meetings and the Zoom stuff and everything to his regular email account for the time being.
Sure.
Till he gets set up. By the time I saw his text, we were already pretty much over half done. So I, I advised him to just, you know, sit tight. But he, he, he made the attempt to be here tonight.
And that's appreciated. A little bit of a change over here. We'll get it right. All right. Nothing else on the Planning Board? Nothing from the audience? Set the next meeting date. We're all good for March 10th. We have guests at that meeting. So we should all be ready for that. Nothing we can push off. I know there was a couple of consultant vouchers and payments for bills that we wanted to talk about.
I sent those to you. Do you want me to pull them up or are you all set with us?
As far as I'm concerned, we're all set. I mean, they looked all good to me. Anybody have any comments on those? Did anybody else have a chance to look at them or anything or? Okay. It was, do you need a vote for payment on those, Bill?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So we have the two, two invoices for payment, one from, both from Graves actually, one for Butler Estates. And the other one, that was a review plan, review the plan, plan set. And the other one, Graves invoiced Pierpont Estates' street acceptance. So looking for a motion to accept and have them paid?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the vouchers as presented for Graves Engineering, Butler Estates and Pierpont Estates' street acceptance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to pay the, both of the Graves invoices. We'll do a quick roll call. Guy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
An aye for myself as well, unanimous. Any other town notices or correspondence that we need to know about, Bill?
No.
Excellent.
Still working that partial week schedule. I, I never really understood the mechanics of that, but it's always, nobody was there that you wanted to talk to, but everybody else was, I don't know, somewhere else.
Actually, starting, starting this week, all the employees are back in the building at the same time.
Oh, wow.
The COVID numbers in the town have gone down. So I think we're starting to see an easing a little bit of some of these measures that were put in place.
In-person meeting, in-person meeting. All right. All right. Looks like that we are done. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
A second? I have a second from Guy. We'll even do a roll call vote here for the heck of it. Guy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, unanimous. Thank you guys and gal. See everybody in two weeks.
Thank you all.
Good night. Bye-bye.